I call the planning commission meeting for April 14th, 2022 to order, and we'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Small?
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, March 24th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
On tonight's agenda, we have one public hearing, and we'll follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given that opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so as well, or some people may just have questions, and we'll try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow a towing company has a similar use at 6095 Pine Cone Drive. Is that applicant here? Please come up and tell us a little bit about what you want to do at this location.
What do I do?
Right over here, buddy. Please give us your name and address for the clerk.
Hello, my name is John Wright. I live at 168 Reserve Drive, Granville, Ohio. We are looking at purchasing this property right here. We currently have a roadside company. We do strictly just run with AAA, no cars are towed back to the facility, no repairs are made at the facility. We just need a place to house a few of our tow trucks and a few of our service vehicles. As our employees come into work, they just park their car, grab the truck, go out on the road, run their shift, and come back and swap back out. So that's what we're looking to try to use the property for.
Thanks. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this? Anyone wishing to speak against this? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I'd just ask if the applicant could just elaborate on the, any plans for the outside, particularly there is an outside storage area, but it looks like you're going to be using that for parking. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that is a storage unit right there. There is a fence right there. We just kind of marked that up because that's our initial plan, is how we would probably stage our trucks to park to be able to get them in and out. We're not looking to try to use that storage facility for really anything other than additional parking space.
So the fence is coming down?
Never really thought about it. It can come down, or it can stay up. It doesn't really matter to us.
Anything from the commission members?
Kathy, do you want him to have an opinion on, make a statement about the fence and how that storage area is going to be treated?
Well, we've indicated in the recommended conditions that the parking lot's going to need to be striped, and we're going to need to have a site plan showing what's going to happen there. So, I mean, at some point, a decision will need to be made with regard to that, to account for both the parking of the towing vehicles, as well as the vehicles of their employees.
Thank you. So you've read the staff report and the conditions?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Stripping the parking lot and putting up a handicap spot doesn't seem to be anything that's going to be a big concern for us to do.
Okay.
Obviously, we can't make any changes to the property until after we take ownership of it.
Thank you. So Kathy, what do you want to, do we have an opinion on the fence back there?
If they're not going to use it, and obviously if they need the area for store, for parking, I mean, I would assume it would have to come down. I don't know how they're going to utilize it unless they plan to put vehicles behind the fence, but then that's not going to be as ideal for in and out, getting the vehicles in and out. So I would think that that would likely need to come down, at least based on the drawing that they had provided, and the size of the vehicles, what's there. I don't know how else that they can do it, so.
So what do you think? I see the diagram here. You see the fence? I mean...
Yeah, I see the diagram, and like I said, we don't, we've never brought any of our trucks to this location, so this has just kind of been measured out by the size of the trucks, and this is what we kind of came up with as an initial plan. So I have no problem removing the fence if need be. You know, the fence might come in handy some if we need to park some of the service vehicles that you see that's shown on the inside of the building. Those would kind of fit, you know, three or four wide in that very back and could keep that fenced. All of the vans, they have a lot of equipment on them. They carry $3,000, $4,000 worth of batteries and other stuff in there that we install for AAA out on the road, so that might be an idea if we can't get them all into the building, is be able to store those back in there. But either way, you know, we're pretty easygoing, so we could either, like I said, remove the fence if that's what you guys want. It really doesn't make it matter to us much.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Just to point out, I don't know if anyone's seen this, is that there is a transformer with bollards right next to the building, and so the layout that's shown on the diagram, and we don't see it right now, actually, it looks like that would be your drive aisle, and obviously you can't drive that way. See, right there, there's a transformer. So, you know, since this is not a public parking area, I mean, it's just going to be your vehicles, you can put them anywhere you want. I just want to point out that you can't do that, and I would suggest you remove the fence between, you know, on the parking lot, between the parking lot and the storage area. Let's just remove that fence and treat the surface of that storage area the same way you treat the rest of the parking lot.
Absolutely. I have no problem with that.
Okay, that's all I got.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the seven conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll. Hold on, hold on a second. Do we want to add a condition on that, that the front, that the fence is coming down then?
Sure.
Yes.
And then eighth, you know, I didn't get a chance to look at it. So the eighth condition would be to remove the fence that's between the storage area and the parking lot.
Okay.
A part, I don't care if you do the rest.
Okay.
And treat both surfaces the same way.
Okay, absolutely.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Under new business, we have a modification of an approved development plan for outdoor storage and miscellaneous site work at 9500 Pine Cone Drive. Is that applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Come on up and tell us your name and address for the clerk.
Larry Hunt. I'm from 12025 Clay Street, Huntsburg, Ohio. Currently work at 9470 Pine Cone Drive, ACO Inc. We purchased the property next door. Like to make that the distribution center, increase the stockyard.
Okay, thanks. Kathy, anything from the administration?
We have six conditions that we've noted. That's it.
And you've read the staff report and the conditions, and you're okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members? Mr. Varga?
Mr. Chairman, I only just need a clarification. I noticed in this document, the one that shows the property line, that the, I guess that would be the north, northwest, or northeast property line from Pines Cone to the back, cuts through a parking area that appears to be accessible to the other business there. Can you put this one up, this one here?
Well, that survey accurate, I mean, that might not be accurate lines.
Well, the paving comes pretty close to their building, and there's boats stored there, that one. Is that, I just want clarification either from you or from the city. Is that a representation of the situation, or is that...
What we're looking at doing is taking the concrete pad to the edge of the building and putting up a chain link fence on our side of the property line. So there is a grass strip that runs through there.
Yeah. So this is maybe not accurate. The property line is actually at the edge of that pavement next door?
I think that's, was completed by the surveyor, so...
All right, that's fine. So I was just concerned that that was unresolved, the way that shows.
The pavement is actually on the other property.
I got you. Thank you. That's the clarification I wanted.
Rich, could you give us your name and address for the clerk, please?
Rich Cantanz Reedy, land design consultants, engineers and surveyors, 9025 Osborne Drive, Mennar, Ohio, 44060.
Anything else from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the six conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a modification of an approved development plan for a hospital at 8300 Norton Parkway.
Is that applicant here? Please give us your name, names, and addresses for the clerk, please.
My name is Stephanie Peters. Address 8410 Victoria Drive, Broadview Heights, Ohio, 44147.
I'm Brian Wall, 3151 Evans Way, Twinsburg, Ohio, 440...
Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
We're here to seek approval for three site alterations to a previously approved plan. One of the areas is for a covered bike, a canopy for bike parking. Second is a modification to a previously approved dumpster enclosure to accommodate a trash compactor, and the third is to add three car charging stations. So the first, I don't know if you'd like for me to go into detail for each of those three?
Sure.
The first modification, the Center Hospital is seeking LEED certification at a silver level, and one of the credits that we're going after is cover for bike parking. LEED also requires 16 spots, so the canopy will be covering all 16. We're trying to keep the design minimal and not a focal point, but in kind of vein with the design of the building, so the roof structure will be clad in a aluminum composite metal panel that's white to match the exterior material that's at the main entry. Then we're proposing translucent panels in the roof made from a polycarbonate panel. And the roof is sloping to the south, shed any kind of stormwater into the gravel strip that's below. Second item that we're seeking approval is for the, in our west service yard that's at the lower level, this area is not visible for people as they're entering the site or exiting, but we have a trash enclosure that was previously approved to house three eight-yard dumpsters, and the clinic would like to remove two of those and add a trash compactor that's rear-loading. So we're seeking an opening in the backside and extending the path so that staff can that area from the rear. And then the third item is adding three dual-use or dual-sided electric car charging stations for a total of six car charging spots.
I have a question on the car charging. So there's been a few applicants, and welcome to the new world of electrical charging stations. And if I remember correctly, on some of the cars, they have like a network built in. So as they're driving along, they can pull up all these charging stations along their route wherever they're going, and some have that charge, some of the chargers are on that route, and some aren't. Like, we had classic Cadillac come in, and they, I think they told us that this isn't for the public, these won't show up on their, on their route. Will these, just for a point of information, will these, if people are driving down Route 90, do these show up as a charging station for someone traveling to Buffalo or something? Or, just, just a question.
Yeah, that's a good question. I would have to get back to you and get clarification on that.
Do...
I actually know the answer.
Well, if, if they, if they wouldn't mind, if they don't mind, you could come up and give us your name and address, but it's up to them.
Sure.
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 Frank Castrovalari, I actually have a Tesla.
Okay.
So the way it works is it will not be put on the grid until someone puts it on the grid. So for example, if I happen to be visiting the hospital and I use the charger, I can on my app say, hey, there's a charging station here. There's four. Eventually, the network will get it, and it'll say that there is a charging station there that's available.
So it's the discretion of the user?
Yes.
To locate them?
Unless it's a Tesla charging station, then it automatically gets put on the network.
Okay.
This would be considered a secondary charge station, not a supercharger.
All right.
I'm assuming it's a 30 amp, or 20 amp, or 24 amp. So it's a secondary, I think it's called a charger two. So it doesn't get put on the network until someone...
So once a Tesla pulls in there, you've been found out.
I don't do that. You know, if I see a nice spot, and I know I go there a lot.
Well, I guess you can't.
I don't say anything.
I guess.
But on the other hand, I was stuck one time, and a local church put it on theirs, and I was able to pull in the back of theirs and charge for 20 minutes and go.
Okay.
So, but normally, no, it does not.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I would also say that we would have to talk with what they, what their policies are.
So this is primarily, people come into the clinic, they pull up, they charge their car, they do what they need to do and go. Okay, thanks. Have you read the staff report, and you're okay with the six conditions, eight conditions? And anything from administration?
If the applicant could just note the minor tweaks that they made to the site plan that wasn't included in your packet.
For the electric car charging stations, this plan that's up is the modified, shifted the electric stations, or the electric vehicle stations, spots up one north so that the most southern spot in that row could stay empty for first energy truck to be able to back up to the transformer that's associated with that.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the fellow commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Haddon?
Just one question. For the bicycle addition, is there special pavement markings you need to put in, or a bike path?
No, we don't, we don't need any special markings for that, but it is along, actually flush with the adjacent parking lot. There are ADA spots that are just to the north, so there's a flush curb, and so there's smooth transit.
So when people come and use it, they're going to come down the main entry and then just follow the traffic?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a couple different ways they could go.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Varga? This is just indirectly associated with your, the southern, southwestern service yard. You have an emergency exit, stairway exit somewhere around that end of the building? Where does that empty out?
It empties out in the southwest corner. So you can see where that, I think it's like a red lettering, the TSS, I'm not sure what that is, but there's a little arrow to the south that's pointing to one of the exits.
That's an exit?
Yes.
Okay, so if someone had to exit in an emergency, where would they go? Do they have to go through the service yard to get out?
They would be able to, right, go to the west. There's light bollards along there for egress lighting, and then into the west service yard.
Okay, I don't think that's a problem. I just was wondering where you exited the building at that end during an emergency. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the eight conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, we have a preliminary site plan of an industrial building at 9525 through 9535 Hamilton Drive. I see that applicant is here. Please give us your name and address for the clerk.
Greg Summers with Summers Development Group. On behalf of Summers Development Group, GD3 Ventures and Mennar Industrial Development, LLC, we're here tonight for the, excuse me, preliminary plan approval for a new 120,000 square foot industrial building. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to our project architect Frank to go through the plan. Thank you.
Nice to see you again. Yeah. Frank Castrovalari.
Please give us your name and address one more time.
Frank Castrovalari, FMC Architects, 7675 Harley Hills Drive, just like the motorcycle, North Royalton, Ohio, 44133.
And could you spell your last name?
Yes. C-A-S-T-R-O, V as in Victor, I-L-L-A-R-I.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tell us a little bit about the building.
The site. So obviously, they were here before, when the development took place. We are taking this piece of property, putting 120,000 square foot, it's called a spec building. Don't have a tenant in there available right now, but we're going to design it for multiple use, up to four tenants as of present date. We have parking on one side and around both sides in order to squeeze the requirements in. We have two ponds towards the rear of the property, as well as one also to help take care of the front area. In that little corner, right where the curved, opposite where that, oh, I'm sorry, the other corner, yeah, right there, there's an existing pond right there that's, has to stay there for the road. That takes care of the runoff for the road. So it didn't show up on this drawing, but I just wanted to point that out, that that's already occupied by another pond. Building will house, well, like I said, four tenants up front. We have recessed docks, or actually, I'm sorry, the entire back of the building will be recessed four feet, so there will be no recessed docks. It'll all be level. So wherever there's a delivery truck, we'll ramp up to it. I'm not sure if that site plan, is there my architectural site plan on there? It shows it up on there. Okay, I thought that was part of the package, but basically, right where the trucks are, we'll have a couple of ramps that will go up four feet to the building. So they'll go back about 65 feet and ramp up to the building instead of having a recessed dock. That's because all the land goes from the front of the building towards the back, and most of it goes towards the ponds back there. So there is about a four-feet difference that we're going to take advantage of. The colors of the building for the prelim, we have two colors, they're gray and dark gray, and then where the entrances are, we're going to have accented blues to highlight them and bring notice to those. We'll also have a canopy, right now it's slated to be blackish, and that'll be over again each entrance. I'm sorry, it'll be all pre-cast building, so...
Kathy, anything from administration?
Mr. Chairman, I would just point out, we didn't make it a condition because this is not the architectural review at this time, but under the, the building and design section of the staff report, we did note the administration was questioning the vertical blue bands that were being proposed, and it was our suggestion that maybe that, that the building would look good without the blue bands, and just with the two contrasting gray colors. But we just wanted to point that out to the, to the commission and get some feedback.
I'm on board with administration on that, too. I know the blue looks good here, but it tends to, to look a little dated over time. So I actually wouldn't mind seeing the gray as the accent, but again, these are just recommendations on the architectural, we have another round of this, but that's just a suggestion I have. Anything from the fellow commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Just looking down the road for the architectural review, and just not to state it directly, but this town has a penchant for natural tones, brick colors, tan colors. So you might want to think about that, about what you're looking at. I have a question that may pertain to how other things are done down the line. This is a tilt-up or a pre-cast?
Oh, it'll be pre-cast.
So it's going to be formed offsite?
Yes.
How is the color, whatever the colors are, how is the color attached to the pre-cast?
The light gray will be done in the, at the shop, so to speak, and then they'll come in and paint the darker band.
Yeah. My, and so the, the large body of the, of the building is just the concrete color? It looks white?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a computer, it's going to be a light gray.
It's going to be the natural color of the concrete?
No, there is natural gray, and then there's a shade or two darker than that, that they changed the aggregate of the gray. We were shooting more for slightly not gray, plain gray color. It would be, would be added, added to it.
So you're actually adding a tint to the mixture?
As of right, yes.
To get the color? Because my concern is, you just take concrete, you paint it, 10 years it looks like hell because all the...
No, most of it should be the natural color, and that's one reason why we like the grays, because you can alter that grayish color to get from lighter to darker.
So it'll be integral to the panel?
For the light gray portion, yes.
Right.
We can't do, it's a vertical panel eight foot wide. We can't do one pore of dark with light on top of it, so that's why the dark will be painted.
Okay. I just think we'd want to hear more about, like, is it a concrete stain? Is it a paint?
It'll be painted. It's painted.
It'll be painted, okay. So you may want to speak more about that when, at the time, just so that we understand that the paint won't start coming off.
No, surely ones has a really nice paint that attaches to the pre-cast panels and seems to be formed very well.
Okay. And the only other thing to think about in the future is that we don't want to see any mechanical equipment. I don't know what, you know, you probably don't know what the size or location of the equipment is because you don't have tenants yet.
Correct.
But you need to be aware that we don't want to see the equipment, so that your parapet wall, or the height of the wall versus the roof is sufficient to deal with future mechanical equipment.
I tend to try to centralize the units, so you can't see them from the road, and if there's something special that we have to go towards an edge, we'll put up a screen or something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Mr. Chair? I know you don't have tenants yet, but I was wondering how you plan on subdividing the building, and if you have an idea of how many tenants you're expecting in the building?
Well, it's maximum four, so there can't be more than four tenants. So 120,000 divided by four, or if someone takes two, that, you know, some guy can come in and take two entrances, and that's 60,000 square feet, and then maybe we have two at the end at 30,000 each.
So do you plan on providing truck docks for all four, if they do subdivide into four, or right now you only have two shells?
Yeah, the rear elevation, we didn't develop by this time, so what we're going to do is, we're going to, we're going to pick, right now there's, I think there's nine bays or 10 bays total. We're going to pick a couple in each bay and put either a dock or a drive-up, and then we're going to put knockout panels down the rest of it. So if a tenant comes and he only needs one dock, then he'll have it, but if he needs two, there's a knockout panel that we can provide an extra dock for him. But, so the back will be flexible.
Thank you.
And during the presentation, or for the next presentation, I'll have the ones we're going to do now, and then I'll have dotted lines of where potential future ones may or may not occur.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Because you don't show it, we don't, again, we're kind of getting into the architecture. Where you have overhead doors, is the coil going to be on the outside or the inside?
Inside.
Okay, just because it affects the way it goes.
Oh, yeah, no, inside, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the seven conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.